To the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Anacortes Planning Commission. Shall we take roll here? See, everybody here except Gary Molino. All right. Let's see. Minutes, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes? Any questions or comments? And being heard will approve those. Mr. Miesmar, any correspondence or new business?
Mr. Chair, no correspondence other than that related items on the agenda.
Thank you, sir. I will proceed to item E, old business. With including a public hearing for ordinance four zero two four daycare two as a permitted use in the R four zone. I understand you have someone to introduce.
Mr. Chair, thank you, commissioners, members of the audience, I'd like to introduce Senior Planner Grace Pollard. Grace has been working on the daycare amendments now for quite a while and has, I think, good proposal for you this evening for amendments to that section of our code. Thank you. Welcome, Grace.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you, commissioners, members of the public. This is the open public record hearing presentation for ordinance four zero two four daycare two facilities in the R four zone. Presentation will go over some background information and overview of process as well as quick refresher of the R four zone and some code language. Then I'll present some information that the commissioners had asked for previously and also some that city council members had asked for. So, action on the subject of daycare two facilities in the R four zone began in July twenty twenty-one when city council adopted an interim ordinance temporarily permitting daycare two facilities as an outright permitted use in our four zone. Daycare two is defined as a facility providing more than twelve individuals group care, protection and supervision on a regular basis away from their primary residence. These facilities provide care not only for children but for adults as well. Prior to the adoption of the interim ordinance, daycare two facilities in our four zone required a conditional use permit, which is established in code as a type four review process. Type four review processes can be lengthy, expensive, and the applicant must go through the process with some uncertainty as to the outcome and approval. So I wanted to just make sure that the public as well as maybe a refresher for commissioners understood what the conditional use permit process was. So CUP is the acronym that you might hear staff use when referring to conditional use permits. And the process for reviewing or the CUP permitting process is used for the review of establishing uses of unusual size characteristics or maybe infrequent occurrences in the city, possible safety hazards, and other possible detrimental effects on surrounding properties. And to ensure these types of uses are properly located with respect to the objectives of the municipal code and the comprehensive plan, specific criteria must be addressed. As there are not any specific CUP criteria for daycare facilities, only the general CUP criteria would be addressed. This criteria includes many general development standards that are already requirements in the code, such as access to the site being appropriate, off-street parking and loading facilities are adequate, the amount and location of open space is achieved, and the external effects of the use such as lighting and noise generated are not inconsistent with the adjacent or nearby uses. In permitting a conditional use, some of the possible conditions that the decision maker may impose in addition to the regulations, the standards expressly specified in code are things like increasing the lot size or yard dimensions or increasing the number of off-street parking or loading spaces. And staff believes that these items have been addressed in the proposed new code language that we will review later in this presentation. So here we have an aerial image of the R four zone. You can see roughly a two, two and a half block width from Tenth Street at the top of the page, which is north, down to Twenty-Ninth Street, which is west of Commercial, and about a one-block width on the east side of Commercial from Twenty-Second Street down to Highway twenty and then east again to, I think that's V Avenue. The term R four is the abbreviated term for the residential high-density zone. In addition to providing high-density residential uses within the walking distance of public transit and commercial areas, the R four zone is intended to be a buffer of sorts between the high-intensity uses of commercial and industrial zones from the lower-intensity residential areas. The municipal code states use of the R four zone is appropriate for areas designated residential high-density in the comprehensive plan. And here is in a section of the comprehensive plan under residential uses, policy LU dash six point five that specifically calls out daycare centers as well as other non-residential uses as compatible non-residential uses to be allowed. I wanted to make a slide for kind of comparables. So here we have just bullet points that, under current code, some outright permitted uses in the R four zone that do not require a CUP and they include multiple family developments with no density limit. So they could have as many dwelling units as the development standard regulations of the code would allow, which includes open space, parking, landscaping, things like that, height clearly. Also outright permitted in the R four zone is assisted living facilities, rooming houses, religious institutions with a cap on the structure of under ten thousand square feet, and also parks, open spaces, natural areas. So those are examples of R four outright permitted uses. And then additionally, the general development regulations for the R four zone permits buildings forty feet in height, but limits the maximum lot coverage by building to fifty percent of the lot area and requires twenty percent minimum landscape area with a minimum lot square footage of three thousand square feet. So the city has heard from the Anacortes School District, from Samish Indian Nation, who recently went through the permitting process to establish a new early learning center on D Avenue, as well as from individuals in Anacortes that Anacortes needs additional childcare and early learning capacity. The importance of communities to have available, affordable, quality childcare is critical for working families. And during the peak of the pandemic shutdown, community is all over experienced how business operations can be impacted when workers do not have available childcare. This slide here compiles data from, and of course, business license information, state licensing information, as well as just a Google search. And what we have here are all of the type two. Well, I guess I can't a hundred percent confirm, but all of the data shows that this is all of the type two daycare facilities in city limits. The green dots, there are two of them, they represent the location of school-aged before-after school programs, like the Boys and Girls Club and YMCA. The blue dots, which there are six locations, are early learning centers, so they're the preschool facilities. The orange dots are the two only infant care childcare services that also provide early learning. And then there's two locations that are under construction that will be daycare two facilities. And one thing I saw that was interesting with this information is that there's only two infant care facilities in town at the daycare two level. One provides care to children as young as twelve months and the other provides care to children as young as one month.
On that, on that, is Mount Whitney, does Mount Whitney get credit for three? Is that just one facility, but because it's multi-used, it gets credit for three? So, you know, depending on how you interpret this information, it may appear that there's actually a few more than there actually is because of that?
I, if I understand your question, the Whitney Campus has the YMCA Early Learning Center as well as the, which is it, Whitney YMCA Early Learning Center and the, there's another YMCA.
That's okay, thank.
School age.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, so they're all, yeah, represented.
You have a blue dot there on Oak, Twelfth Street, Oak Avenue at the very top of the map. Unless there's two schools there, the one that was there, one of my neighbors utilized, it's closed, the lady has retired and that facility is no longer utilized, so unless there were two facilities there.
Through the garden gate is the one shown off of Oaks Avenue.
Okay, there was one in that same area that I know the lady retired, because one of my neighbors had a child there because she worked in Mount Vernon, she ended up with daycare in Mount Vernon, she couldn't play anything locally, probably you've already, you've already talked about, but.
Yeah, and I suppose I can't guarantee that these are open today, but they did have active websites and some level of business license. So state standards. State has minimum programs base requirements for both the children daycare centers and the adult daycare centers. This is some WAC code references that outline what that minimum standards are for the state to be licensed by the state. We have thirty-five square feet of indoor space per child with an additional fifteen square feet for infants and toddlers using a crib or playpen. We have outdoor requirement seventy-five square feet per child accessing the play space, though you will see that code, the state also allows for alternatives in meeting the outdoor space area. And then the last main bullet point breaks down the staff ratio requirements that the state places on daycare centers. The infant and toddler centers have two group size ratio differences. So you can see there that an infant center with eight children would have a one-to-four ratio staff. With one more child at nine, they would then bump that up to a staff ratio of one to three and similar for the toddlers there. This is the state regulations for adult day centers. They do not have requirements for minimum outdoor space, but they do have minimum requirements for indoor program facilities, which is sixty square feet per individual at the day center. There's also a minimum staff ratio of one for six clients. In previous discussions with Planning Commission, there was a request that we provide some examples, existing examples in town. So here we have the most recent site plan for Fiddlehead Montessori, which is on the corner of R Avenue and Twenty-seventh Street. This is in the R four zone. We have a total lot size of just under twelve thousand square feet. Total structure size of all three buildings, three thousand one hundred and twenty-four square feet, and they have provided eight onsite parking spaces. I wasn't able to confirm the number of children this facility provides care for, but in the public hearing for Fiddlehead Montessori to have that new building, it was stated that their current enrollment rate was around forty-two and their maximum enrollment rate that they could reach is fifty-three. Here we have the Anacortes Family Center. It's on Twenty-Sixth Street, west of Commercial Avenue. It is also zoned R four, lot size of nine thousand two hundred and thirty-eight square feet. The total ground floor building area where the daycare two facility will be located in is a total of four thousand two hundred and seventy-four square feet, of which three thousand one hundred and eighty-five square feet is actually for the childcare use. They've provided six onsite parking spaces plus an additional nine along Twenty-Sixth Street Public Ride-A-Way, which is not shown here, but it is at the top of the page. Twenty-Sixth Street is north there. And they have declared that they have a child capacity of forty. And then here we have the Samish Early Learning Center located on D Avenue. Did you want to point out that this is zoned R two A? Lot size is fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven square feet. Plus, they do have not shown here an additional six thousand four hundred and eighty-seven square foot parking lot across the alley to the north. Total structure size of the building is four thousand one hundred and thirty and they've provided six onsite parking spaces, thirteen additional in the parking lot across the alley. And they've improved the, or will be improving, the public ride-of-way along Sixteenth to include thirteen additional parking spaces. Now, keeping in mind that this example shows a daycare two facility in our two zone, which will continue to require a conditional use permit. There are, where some of the CUP conditions can be required, like increased parking or larger lots, that of course does not change with what's being presented today. I did not get confirmation as to the maximum child head count for this building. Parking, so this is the current standards for daycare two facilities and they require Planning Director to determine appropriate level of parking. This is often determined after the applicant has hired and paid for a parking study showing the impact the use may have on the adjacent streets and neighborhood. This process is expensive and can be seen as a burden even on the childcare provider's permitting budget. As it was presented to the Planning Commission previously, staff is proposing that the minimum required parking for daycare two facilities in our four zone equal the number of staff on the largest hourly shift plus adequate loading area. A commissioner had previously asked about reducing the parking requirements when public transit was proposed. And in considering that comment, I referenced to code and the parking chapter. Municipal code does have a modification that could be applied to the R four zone in which the applicant would present a alternative. And the Planning Director would then determine if that transportation-related alternative parking proposal met the standards of the code. And that's under AMC nineteen sixty-four oh six oh. Here are some examples of other jurisdictions in our area and how they require parking for daycare two facilities. We'll go through each one of these, they are quite similar, but there are some slight differences. So Bellingham requires one parking space for each staff person working at any time, plus provisions shall be made for an adequate drop-off area located off the street. Mount Vernon requires one parking space for each employee plus loading and unloading areas. Burlington requires one space for each ten clients slash children or one space for each staff member, whichever is greater, plus one loading and unloading space for each twenty clients or children. Stanwood requires one space per classroom plus one space for each ten students based on the rated capacity of the facility. Marysville requires one space per staff member and one space for ten clients plus a paved, unobstructed pickup area should be set aside for drop-off and pickup. Children in a safe manner that will not cause the children to cross the parking area or lines of traffic. And Everett requires whichever is greater, one space for each ten children or two for each three employees on shift. In addition, one vehicle loading space for each twenty children. Now, I broke this down to a really basic scenario where there may be an early learning center with two classes of preschoolers, so forty children, four staff. And I wanted to point out in this table that the total required parking for Burlington and Everett include the specific number of parking spaces for pickup and drop-off where Bellingham, Mount Vernon, Marysville, and Anacortes' proposal still has a requirement that appropriate pickup-drop-off is established, but had not proposed a specific number of parking spaces to satisfy that code. I also wanted to provide a example of possibly a more complicated situation and also point out the size of the building, number of children and staff in an example of a early learning facility providing care for one group of infants, one group of toddlers, and one group of preschoolers. I can go over this, but it's pretty much just the numbers speak for themselves. I did point out, I did want to point out that the minimum indoor area for children use is shown here at nineteen hundred square feet and that clearly does not include any of the areas not for children use. So the building would have to be a fair bit larger to accommodate for bathrooms, storage, electrical, mechanical rooms, closets, hallways, laundry, kitchen, all those other items. So here we have staff recommendation is that daycare two facilities are an outright permitted use in our four zone with the following requirements. An approved passenger drop-off and pickup area must be provided adjacent to the site. Parking must be provided in an amount equal to the number of staff on the largest hourly shift. The facility must meet all licensing requirements consistent with Washington State Department of Children, Youth and Families, the DCYF licensor, including interior floor space, fencing, and outdoor open space areas. Maximum building size must not exceed four thousand square feet. The public comment period for this open public hearing began on August twenty-fourth and a notice was published in the paper, City Hall and the library, and we did not receive any public comments. But this time I turn it back to the commissioners for deliberation, possible action.
Thank you very much. Unless there are questions from the commissioners, we'll have time for discussion after the hearing. At present time, we'll open up the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment or have any questions?
Mr. Chair, there are no members of the public present.
Thank you, sir. We will now close the public hearing and proceed with any discussion by commissioners.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I might. And, but Ms. Pollard, thank you very much, that was absolutely excellent presentation, hit all the points necessary for us. If we could have just a very brief conversation on item D of Staff's Proposal, I noticed as we were going through the presentation that the Anacortes Family Center and the Samish projects are both over four thousand square foot of building area. So perhaps we might want to think about, instead of limiting that to four thousand, we maybe go to five thousand? Because each of those buildings are around forty-two hundred square feet.
Questions from the commissioners, any comments? Dr. Martin, Mr. Chair?
I have a couple of questions. So the first one is basic, you gave us regulations for the daycare as well as the adult daycare, so they're all combined, but the staffing in the WAC looks different for adults, so am I right?
You are correct.
Okay, so then if you would go to, back to that chart that you had, the example parking scenario.
This one?
Yep. My first question is, if you had one more row that showed current requirements, what would the current requirements show?
Planning Director would determine, or determination. So that's what this is, so daycare two facilities director decision is the minimum parking spaces required.
So the per staff number would be? See what I'm asking?
Well, the staff, staff number is based on the number of clients or children that the facility is providing care for.
So currently is the number four like it is proposed? I'm just trying to get a sense of what's the change? I know the change as far as the permitting process, but what's the change that's being proposed?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Mr. Miesmar.
Excellent, thank you, very good question, Ms. Martin, thank you. So currently, when folks are looking at doing a daycare two, they will propose what parking they think works for them and then the director decides if that's appropriate. And oftentimes, we go back and do exactly what Ms. Pollard did, which is look at other jurisdictions, guidelines for parking. Because we're, we're, we really don't want a daycare two, which we know that they're limited in funding anyway, they're trying to build a daycare facility to go get a traffic engineering report, it's going to cost them a couple of grand, a couple of thousand dollars. So we're not, we don't really want to make them do that. So when I look at something like that, oftentimes what they propose is, hey, we've got four staff, we want to do four parking spaces and a drop-off.
Okay, so, so if there was another line where it showed current Anacortes, it would be?
Director's decision.
On all the way across?
Yes.
Am I correct that this is largely driven by the staffing requirements from the state?
That's correct.
They designate how many employees are required based on the number of children.
That's correct.
Parking requirements are based on the number of staff that they are permitted, that they are required to have.
That's correct.
Can we circle back to Mr. Miesmar's previous question? Any discussion about the change in square footage and impacts there?
Mr. Trick, can we follow up on the question about the parking? Just for my clarification, Mr. Miesmar, the parking needs to be dedicated parking to that building. You're not counting street parking as being eligible for this requirement?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's dedicated off-street parking for staff.
Since we're still on the topic of parking.
Go ahead.
You know, good point, though, difference between a child daycare and an adult daycare is, you know, an assumed visitor coming to meet with parents, right? So you, I assume, as the final determination of the number of parking required, you would take that into account to make up for visitors for adults, not so much for children with additional parking?
Under the current code, yes. What we're proposing here is just for parking for staff purposes, those guests that come to visit would be able to use on-street parking.
We assume that based on the location of the facility, though, right? You're not going to make that a requirement to be on the property?
That's correct.
I mean, is that something that we should take under consideration as being a good idea or?
As someone who studied parking, I was parking guru when I worked in Woodinville. It's one of those things where if you require too much parking, it becomes burdensome on the person who wants to develop, I mean, that's a lot of area, right? And it's not good for the environment, it's more impervious surface, it's not good for stormwater, it's not good for the environment. That said, you don't want to create a situation where it's a nuisance and, and the neighborhood doesn't want it. So I And and the neighborhood doesn't want it. So I don't, I, you know, I, I think this is a reasonable proposal personally. I think, you know, your staff parks here and the biggest, your, your, your peak times are picking up the kids. So as long as the facility is designed for that, I think that's okay.
I'm, I'm on board with everything that you just said. But, you know, we're going from examples that were presented of as many as 19 parking lots on the facility. To now as many as maybe just four. And, you know, there's got to be a number, I think, somewhere between four and 19 that would meet all of her concerns. As well as ensure that family members wanting to meet with their, you know, residents at the facility. Have an opportunity to park without taking up parking in front of somebody's home or what have you. That, that's the point I'm trying to make.
Mr. Chair, if I may. First, let me address the 19 parking spaces for the Samish. Keeping in mind that those parking spaces are not all for the daycare. Those parking spaces also include spaces that are necessary for the longhouse. And that are inadequate for the school that is also in the longhouse area. And so when, when we started reviewing that project, what we realized was that there was a need for additional parking in the area. And so the city is contributing some improvements on the street for on-street parking. And then the Samish are providing additional parking in their parking lot for the longhouse when they have events and so forth. And so it's, you know, it's our opinion that they're overparked. In, in our opinion. And so we look at this and, and, you know, as Ms. Reader stated, you know, we're. We, as the commissioners know, in 2019, when we went through the parking regulations, we identified that we were overparking. Many different businesses and we reduced all those parking requirements, for instance, in the central business district by 50%. And that's been working very well.
So let me ask for just two scenarios. If we're licensed, if we're licensing a, an adult daycare, then the pickup and drop off issue, I assume is much less. Significant.
Not necessarily.
Or is that, or is that going to, I guess I'm wondering, how do you, how do you compare the two? And the amount of parking and the, and the logistics of getting people in and out. And providing space for visitors over and above the actual minimum staffing requirement.
Sure. Adult daycare is almost exactly like child daycare. My experience with that was with one that was over on Fifth Street, I think it was. And that was a drop off adult daycare. And that would give, you know, that would give their caregiver the opportunity for a break. You know, and so they had the staff parking, they used on-street parking for when they would, you know, the on-street areas. When they would come and drop off and pick up, you know, their adults. But it worked out very well. We never really got any complaints on that particular one.
So on any individual, for any individual applicant looking for a permit. If I, did I understand correctly that? That part of the issuance of the permit is dependent on being confident that there is an adequate space for pickup and drop off?
Yes, for either one of them, they will have to show us that there is space for pickup and drop off. A good example is Fiddlehead School where they had to improve the street with a pullout. And that's where they, the adults, rather, the parents drop off their kids. And it accommodates, I want to say about four or five cars, you know.
Mr. Jaski, you had something?
Are we discussing the size of the building or the parking? It seemed like we.
We were on the parking.
We're on the parking, okay.
We need to circle back to this square footage question.
One of the communities had a provision where children or, or I guess even adults being dropped off couldn't cross other parking spaces. I don't know why, but that seems like a really good idea to me. That the drop off didn't, didn't require the child and probably most likely the child having to cross. Or possibly be out of driver's sight, sightline. Which community was that? And does that, does that make sense for something that we should be? Oh, okay, thank you. Again, that just seems, that picture in my mind just seems like a really sensible thing to do if we can incorporate that in our plan, too.
And we can definitely, you know, incorporate any language that the commissioners want to. I will point out, though, that code does have specific pedestrian pathways to parking lot requirements anyway. So it might just be something that code addresses. Already.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
So if, if you're developing. Off-street parking to satisfy the staff parking requirements. Then you have to have an accessible route of travel from the parking to the building. That's required by ADAG. Secondly, when they're providing for the drop off and pickup area. You also have to have an ADA accessible route of travel from the drop off area to the building entrance.
It sounds like Marysville actually specifically put that in there.
Yeah, and. I, I feel it's not necessary because it's already in our Washington State Building Code. And as well in our engineering standards.
Mr. Curtis.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could move to the square footage question.
Any, any last questions about the parking?
I'd like to ask our parking expert.
I, I have, I have one suggestion. I don't know if anyone's driven on 50th Avenue in Seattle. But they have a lane there that is a flexible lane, so you can use it from. I don't, it's not during commuting hours, but when it's not during commuting hours, it comes parking. So the thought there was, you could use the same thing for the pickup and drop off. When it's not the pickup and drop off times for the kids, you can make it parking, but not during those hours. And, and, you know, reasonably you wouldn't be meeting with a teacher when school's getting out because the teacher's busy. So that's, that's a thought for making sure that you had visitors parking without having to have more parking requirements.
I hope we never have as much traffic as 50th.
Okay, I'm moving on to the square footage question. All right.
Mention that. Can we go to the slide, please, that showed the 4,000 versus 5,000 square feet? I think it was towards the end of the presentation.
Existing, the existing site plans? That.
I think, go, I, I, what I was. What I was referencing were the actual drawings of the AFC. And I think it was the Samish.
Right, so this proposal caps it at 4,000. But there are currently two that are over that.
Correct.
You had suggested perhaps we consider 5,000 to accommodate those.
Correct.
Just candidly, did you come up with 5,000 because that's bigger than what's listed on these two structures? Or is there, is there, is 4,500 the number? Or is it 4,000? And there's an exception made for these two.
Yeah, you know, it's called grabbing out of the air. Yeah, if you like 45, that's fine. What I was trying to get at was, is I didn't want the commissioners to look at this and say, yes, let's go for 1,000. And now all of a sudden we have folks that are looking at building two or are in the process of building two that are over 4,000.
Sure, I just wanted to kind of get some context for where those numbers fell off.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And now, I mean, shouldn't building square footage, though, be necessarily tied to the lot size? And then any other area required for playgrounds or parking or not impervious, you know, areas as well? And if you put a limit on it or a number to it, could it exceed the 50%? Could it, could it? You know, either dwarf or over, you know, not accommodate, be the. You know, I think what we're looking for is an opportunity for us to maximize the size based on the lot, right? And all of the other requirements? Yes, no?
Not necessarily. So the, the size, the reason we're proposing a maximum size is that just in case somebody comes along and they've got. In the R4 use zone, a 20,000 square foot lot and they want to build a 10,000 square foot daycare. That's it. When we say maximum 5,000, 4,000, 4,500 square foot building, whatever. It still has to comply with maximum lot coverage, building setbacks, building height and everything else for design.
And lessons learned from the five-story apartment building, it should blend in well with the other dwelling units in the neighborhood, right? Ideally?
Ideally.
Yeah.
We haven't got to design standards on that. We haven't been proposing any, so. Other than the maximum square foot.
So that leads me to another question. This is a R4 zone, is it? Can you envision having a daycare on the ground floor of a multi-story mixed-use building?
Absolutely.
Family center.
In fact, we would recommend it. You know, for purposes, you know, a multi-use building where you've got multifamily up above. You've got a daycare on the lower floor and you've got, you know, mixed parking lot, drop off area.
So what would be? I'm not that familiar with the R4 zone typical lot size. What, what would be a typical lot size in that area?
So the platted lots in the R4 use zone range are 3,000 square feet. But most folks have a combination of anywhere from four to five lots. And so a good example. Grace, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the Anacortes Family Center. The Anacortes Family Center is a mixed-use building and it has multifamily on the upper floors and a daycare on the lower floors. And it's on a lot, can't actually see what the numbers are on that lot. I want to say it's around a 6,000 square foot lot, no. Thank you. 9,000 square foot lot. And they meet all the requirements in the R4 use zone with the maximum lot coverage setbacks, open space requirements.
So the idea of raising it above 4,000 feet is essentially based on experience. With the scope of projects that people have been proposing.
That's correct.
Is there a, a reason why that size tends to get picked? Is that like an optimum for the size of the business or?
So I had first looked at that number as what I had recollected without looking at the files. On what these two projects were in square footage. And I was reminded that they're actually a little over, thank you, Grace. So through this process.
Can I ask a hypothetical? Somebody had a 20,000 foot lot, though, and wanted 8,000 square feet of kid space, could they build two buildings?
If it met all the code requirements, it could.
Technically, technically it would. They'd have less than 50% coverage and they would have a.
Correct.
This building would be limited to whatever number we have.
Correct. And you're looking at, as you, the commissioner mentioned earlier, all the open space outdoor requirements. Based on the Washington Administrative Code, open space requirements based on our codes, setbacks, maximum lot coverage, everything.
Okay, any other questions about lot size? Or building size? And did I remember correctly, there's more about parking?
I, I just wanted.
Have we resolved the footage? Have we decided what number we like? 4,500, 4,750? Like, can we put one issue to bed? I get confused easy.
I mean, is, is a specific number really required, right? It's going to be based on the lot size, the 50% requirement. And, I mean, really, it's going to come down to your discretion, right?
It comes down to whether or not it meets the requirements of the R4 use zone for setback and lot coverage. And you're right, the commissioners could say, you know what, we're not really concerned about a lot, a, a building size. And just let the regulations take care of it as it goes along with the requirements for open space setbacks, lot coverage, et cetera. You're absolutely correct.
So if. Sorry, I mean, I mean, we could be limiting the size of the facility based on the lot if we put a number there, right? Or, you know, to your point, the 8,000, you know, 16,000 square foot lot, 8,000 square foot building. Would it be acceptable? Yes, but if we have a 4,000 or 5,000 number on it, it could limit opportunity. I, I, I mean, I, I don't know, but I'm perfectly comfortable with leaving it to your discretion with all of the other stuff that's in there for setting the requirement.
Yeah, if the commissioners don't think it's necessary to have that square footage, that would be fine. We could move it, you could move it ahead to council without that.
I, I kind of like the idea of having a square footage maximum just because of the community that we live in. That, that would be the reason for me.
I, I tend to agree with you, too. I mean, the idea is you could, you could go floors up. Not, I don't, I don't think that we would get some mega center because I don't think we have the population to support it. But, you know, I, I think in the character of the neighborhood, that you don't want some huge mega daycare center there. So I, I think a limit, I'm, I'm fine with 5,000 square feet or whatever, but.
I, I think.
Some limit is good.
The only, again, the only thing to consider with regards to putting a number there is if we're not having. You know, how many people are out there actually looking to open up a daycare center? And, you know, if you set a limit to it, we may be limiting the. Opportunity here for daycare in Anacortes, which is the goal of what this whole process is, is to try to. You know, that, that, I, yeah.
Can we get in, can you refresh us on how many? I think you had an estimate earlier on how many students were expected at Fiddlehead. And then can you give us that with their square footage again, please?
So from the. Applicant during their public hearing, the numbers that they shared was that the current enrollment. Would be 27 students between the three buildings. But their maximum enrollment would be. Sorry, their current, before the new building, it was 27. Their current enrollment with the new building would be 42. And their maximum enrollment would be 53.
So the maximum enrollment of 53 with 3124 square footage?
And, you know, during her. Discussion, you know, she did say that she did not have those numbers in front of her and that she was, you know, going off of memory and to, you know. There was some, she said, if I'm one or two students off, you know, please bear with me or something like.
Yeah, based on, it's, it's my judgment, this, this is pretty representative of what we might see more of in the R4. I don't know that we have a lot of concerns that we would be finding eight or 10,000 square foot. No. Daycare twos. I think this is pretty representative of what we.
Yeah.
And so in that case, in order to accommodate the two structures that are already over 4,000, I think, putting a cap of 4,500.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not arguing for 8,000 square foot daycare centers. What I'm suggesting is, is that there's already enough requirements in the. Regulations that will probably end up with a 4,000 to 5,000 or less square foot facility, right? Without actually having to put a number on it. That's the only point I'm trying to make.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Mr. Meesmer.
Mr. Graff makes a really good point, and let me give you a scenario. Anacor's Family Center, the ground floor. Is 4,274. But what we need to keep in mind is that's three fours. There are two floors of apartments up above. And so if we actually, if, if this was actually approved by the council at 4,500 square foot, say. Then they wouldn't have been able to build that building because we just limited it to 4,500 square foot. So Mr. Graff makes a really good point that perhaps we should just rely on the code sections that we have. To require the open space landscaping setbacks, et cetera, and maximum lot coverage such that we don't then. Overly complicate someone who wants to do a mixed-use building, so.
Any other comments, questions? I just want to clarify, the. The proposal deals with the actual ground floor square footage, not the total square footage of the building?
The commissioners could revise item D to read. The maximum size of the daycare may not, must not exceed 4,500 square foot. And that way, if the, the daycare is going to be on the ground floor, because state doesn't allow them on upper floors. And so.
So in that case, I would address the point that you just raised about the upper floors of AFC, correct?
I'm sorry.
What you just said then would mitigate the concerns you just expressed about AFC.
That's correct.
What about a building? A 6,000 square foot building with 4,000 dedicated to childcare and 2,000. Pediatrician, you know, physical therapist, I mean, some other professional in there. I mean, you could have a, you could have a building bigger than 4,000, one level. Are we going to limit the amount that's. Are we going to limit the amount that space that can be dedicated to childcare?
Um, yes, that's possible.
We got a lot of whatevs.
And I'm happy to leave it as a director's decision. If you want to put it on your shoulders, that's fine too. I mean, I don't, I don't want to make it so it's hard for someone to develop. I mean, like I said, I don't, I don't, I don't think childcare is, I mean, as a mom who has had a lot of trouble finding childcare, it doesn't seem like something that people are knocking down doors to come develop huge childcare. So I don't see a huge problem with that, but, I mean, I do want to be mindful of the neighborhood because this is a place where people live. It's not the quietest use during the day.
So, uh, the commissioners could, um, have a motion that would recommend approval to city council. The proposed amendments without item D, which is the maximum area.
What you're thinking?
I so moved.
If we don't take it out, I think we should make it specific to the daycare aspect so that we're not limiting a Anacortes Family Center, like, opportunity in the future. And then, you know, whatever number we decided to put in there to be that maximum daycare size, you know, I would support. So I, there's a motion on the floor. I want to know if you could be more specific then about your proposal.
Uh, just a second, and I will read my language, last minute here.
Would you like, uh, a proposal on that language?
I move that we, uh, approve, um, draft ordinance four oh two four with the following modification, the elimination of three D.
Thank you. Can, can we go back to parking, though? I, I just, I, I think what I'm looking for is just to hear from you that, you know, for a, for a, for an adult daycare facility, that you would accommodate, the location of the facility, the available off-street parking opportunity when you make your decision on the number of required on-premises parking, right? For possible visitors during the day, that would, you know, possibly, I don't necessarily need to see four change to a six for, or anything like that. But it would be nice to know that we've taken that into account.
Yes, when we look at, uh, adult daycares and visitors, visitors, we do take that into consideration. And our code does specifically take into consideration guest parking, so.
And then, you know, she mentioned early in her presentation that I think one of the secondary, uh, benefits of this review was to decrease the cost to permit, right? And besides the parking studies now, which I think may go away based on this rewrite, were there any other opportunities that we've found in this process that will, you know, make other reductions in the cost for this?
Absolutely. In some cases, we've required a traffic analysis. And now that we've got specific standards, that wouldn't be required again, and that could be upwards two or three thousand dollars.
Great, thank you. Before we go any further, I'm dredging up my old Robert's Rules of Order here. We have a motion on the floor. And we need either a second or.
Could it be a, when is it?
And then we can proceed to further discussion.
That's right. You need a second, and then you have a motion to discuss.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have, we now have a motion and a second. And do I understand there's a proposal to have to further discussion before we proceed?
I'm not as well-versed on Robert's rules as you. I have an alternative motion, so I'll, I'll defer when it's appropriate to, to make that.
You, you have an alternative motion, so you can, you can, in the discussion, propose that, uh, alternative motion. And the person who made the motion can accept that, and that could be just a friendly acceptance. Or you can, um, ask for the vote on the current motion, and then we propose another motion.
Thank you. You're sharper on that than I am.
Thank you. Before I do that, though, I have one question for Mr. Riesmer on language.
Go ahead.
Do the codes make a distinction in language between should and shall? So what should would be included in here as an advisory, but could still be left open to your determination as a director?
That's true.
Thank you.
So we've, let me clarify one thing, though. So we, at the request of city council, have gotten away from shalls and use either should or must.
But it should.
It leaves it open for interpretation.
Thank you.
Okay.
If appropriate, please tell me if it's not, I'd make a motion to pass the resolution with the change to three D to read the maximum building size should not exceed four thousand square. Excuse me, four thousand five hundred square feet.
Okay, so as the originator of the motion, I don't accept that, um, change. So we can vote on, I can call for the question, we can vote on the original motion. And then you can ask for, uh, see if you can get a second for your proposal.
You restate yours, please. Could you restate your motion?
I move that we, uh, approve the draft ordinance four oh two four with the following modi, modification, eliminating three D. So I'll call for the question.
Okay. We have a, uh, motion and a second, and we'll call a question for a vote.
But before we vote, I want to ask, okay, let's say this motion is curious. And you make a motion, and you're, and people both are, are willing to go with either one of them. I mean, I, I guess I, I, I see a potential logjam, maybe. So I'm guessing that you're not going to vote to approve this motion, but then you're going to make a motion. If some of us go, I can live with either, but we have, we have a somewhat of a.
No, I'm, I'm not displeased.
I'm sorry?
I'm not displeased with her motion. I was trying to find a way to split a little. And, and try to find a number.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I think at this time is appropriate, as earlier mentioned, uh, the vote was called for. We have a motion and a second on the floor. That should be disposed of with a vote.
And we call it, call it all. Okay, we'll take a vote. Mr. Curtis?
Aye.
Mr. Graff?
Aye.
Mr. McKenzie?
Aye.
Madam Ritter?
Aye.
Mr. Jarski?
Aye.
Madam Martin?
Aye.
Thank you.
I don't understand. Do we, do we get another motion to revote on, with a stipulation of a size limitation? No.
I don't hear one.
Okay, so now everybody has voted. The chair will announce that the motion has passed. And if the chair wants to entertain more discussion, just as an informal discussion, and the.
I think that's probably appropriate.
Yep.
So the first motion has passed, and is there further discussion on, on this issue? Let that go? Okay. In that case, we're good.
I guess the interesting part here is the city council still have a right, all of us to come up with a size.
Yes, it's our recommendation.
Thank you, commissioners.
And Dr. Martin for your assistance with the rules of order. With that, uh, we will end the meeting. Thank you all.